November of 2019 and thanks for being here.
I am at large council member Danielle Jurenski.
And I'm Dustin July.
We have some time to do Q and A, so whatever questions people folks have, we have 10 minutes to do that because we want to be respectful of everybody's time, but we'll just kind of rapid fire and have at it.
Yeah, so I have a question about the camping ban with so like when a police officer or an authority goes up to the camp and says you can't be here. Is it the authority's responsibility to tell them what the situation is like whether or not they have shelter? And if so, the rule is if there's no shelter available, then they can enforce the abatement. Is it the authority's responsibility to tell them what the law is?
So I first and foremost would like to take the police out of that situation. That was specifically what you just asked. So we are, we have city staff that does that and we're working on hiring more city staff. So they're the ones that go out and post these abatements and you're right, if we don't have shelter beds available, we can't abate those camps. So we will abate as many camps as we have shelter beds available and we are working on short-term and long-term options for.
So is it the city's responsibility to let the people who are camping that situation, what the situation is?
And I think one of the things I want to make very clear because there's, there's some confusion. People often will say, I'm gonna stand up so y'all can hear me. People often say you're, you're criminalizing homelessness. No, we're not. So the, the initial contact with an abatement, let's say somebody calls in, says to the city, hey, there's an encampment here. The initial contact is going to be with somebody from a code enforcement and they're going to have to provide them here your shelter options and they're going to have to tell them they have 72 hours to move. The illegal part of this and where it becomes a crime is if they don't leave because at that point they're refusing a lawful order. They're disobeying a lawful order or they're trespassing in some cases. That's when police could become engaged if they don't leave that 72 hours, but the initial contact is going to be with code enforcement.
So they can only get a fine if they don't leave within 72 hours?
Just like if, if anybody didn't follow the law, that, that could happen, right?
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
I'm kind of confused about the, the ban and the shelter. So if they don't leave within 72 hours, will we provide shelter anywhere?
That's a, so there's a federal court ruling that determined a camping ban cannot be enforced unless shelter beds are available.
Well, where do we shelter them? Where do they go?
Well, that's the municipality's responsibility to provide those beds if they want to enforce the camping ban.
You're working on finding shelters, so?
And there are shelters available, like the day resource center, we're working with them as possible. So there are beds available currently and which, but we understand that in order to fully enforce this over time, we're going to have to have more shelters. Although if, if people, if we have a ban in place and people start to go in the shelters, part of the reason that I supported this ban is that I believe that a lot of the people who are going into the encampments are doing it to disassociate from society and disassociate from services. If they go into a, a shelter service, they're going to get mental health treatment, they're going to get addiction treatment, they're going to have access to services with job career services. That's part of the reason we want to, we can't force anybody to, but what we can say is you can't camp, but you can go into the shelter where hopefully they'll get access to services or they're going to have to move on.
So you give them a choice?
Give them a choice.
I mean, when there is shelter available, if they don't take the choice, then it's a, if they're not gone in 72 hours, they're fined?
Then they have to leave Aurora.
Then they have to leave?
Yes.
And who's, who's keeping track of all that?
We have city staff. I mean, we have entire teams being built. We're hiring more staff for this.
So you have openings and availabilities on that side?
Yes.
Right in the back.
Our ability to enforce the ban, like are, do we have enough beds to enforce the ban? And also are we looking at options beyond continuing to locate services? It feels like all the services always go to Ward 1. Are we looking at doing shelters in areas other than Ward 1?
So do we have enough beds to enforce the ban? Yes, to a certain extent. Do we have enough beds to, to abate every single camp in the city of Aurora? No, but are we able to enforce the ban? Yes, we are. And what was the second part of your question?
The question was, I watched the study section on Monday and it seems like the, the idea continues to form that we should put the cities before shelter in Ward 1. Are we looking at locations outside Ward 1 to build the homeless shelter?
Well, I think the reason why they chose the day resource center is because that's like the resource center that we have. It is used as a weather shelter when we have bad weather. So that's kind of what we have established. So that's why that's been kind of the idea to move some of those that, those shelter options there because it's already established.
To expand on it.
To expand on what we already have in Comitas and then some of our outdoor shelters that we have.
Right there, standing up.
Yeah, this is actually for you Danielle, we're Dustin, since my whole household voted for you guys and they put signs in there. Uh, we have the central rec center, new rec center and we live right in that neighborhood and right there on South Sleda. People, I mean, they put the light up and thought about that. Okay, that's good, but we need some kind of, I've been almost run over on that street three times, four times with my little dog, with a walker.
Is this, hold on just one second, Officer Krieger, is this, when we were at Steve's Ward 2 town hall, is this that same intersection?
This is Yale and?
No, this is Slide, uh, South Slide Way and I, where they put the new rec center, central rec center.
Okay.
Okay.
Tell you right.
Tell you right, yeah.
So we need some kind of speed bumps on there and we're gonna talk to each other. I don't know if it's your board, but I voted for you guys, so I want you guys to do something about this.
Yeah, I thought we're at large.
We need, we need, we need speed bumps, we need some kind of flashing lights with walkers. I mean, children are going to be killed there. I was just, just last week and this happened to my neighbors. I'm driving down the street, doing a speed limit and an idiot passes me in residential area. And I called 911 or non-emergency and said, this, you know, I'm gonna report this.
There's also the elementary school right there.
Yeah.
Yes, there is.
Are you familiar with the application? No, I am not familiar with the application. I think my fiancee Barbara told me about it and I just figured I'd bring it up to the people I voted for and I can put you through because children are going to be killed.
Will you please send an email? He just gave you a card. Will you please send an email? And I've made note of this and we will work with our traffic department to see what we can do and maybe run a traffic study over there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Perfect. Right.
My question or my issue is if Aurora, temporary Aurora police chief, what's the city Aurora plan, paying olds to come in for six or nine months? Why not upgrade somebody from the city of Aurora's?
Right.
What do we pay on an outsider basically?
Yeah, so that we can do a nationwide search in order to ensure that.
No, I understand that. What's wrong with one of our cops to be a temporary police chief?
Yeah.
First, if somebody.
That was a decision that was made by the city manager.
I know, okay. What do we pay on him?
Oh, what do we pay him?
Yeah.
I don't think we've been told that.
We gotta pause it. We gotta be paying some of this.
Oh, no, of course we are, of course we are. Yeah, I, we just don't, I can, we can get that information for you.
Yeah. We're paying 18,000 a month.
Yeah, 18,000.
Is that what it was? Okay, yeah, I didn't see that.
What's wrong with one of our guys doing it?
I thought Joel's was doing it.
He's the acting.
He was acting.
Yeah, so he was, we obviously, once there was immediate separation, we had to have a chief in place, right, to keep things done. So he was the acting. But there was a decision to bring in somebody from the outside to be a temporary chief until we nationwide search.
At least I have a hard problem with that. That tells me nobody's police is, you know, able to do it, temporary.
I mean, all we can offer is opinions. I'm full of opinions about what's going on in our department, but all we can actually offer is opinions because this was all done by our city manager.
Yeah, but it's our money.
I don't disagree with you at all and if I had it my way, of course, maybe it would be different. Dean?
Back to this homeless stuff. It appears to me that the people that are homeless know that this ban is, it's, it's under, under action right now and it's moving. What, and what I'm seeing is a lot, these homeless camps in these compounds, they're growing in the DOT corridors. I don't know if you noticed it, under, under the interstate. Now Aurora does not have jurisdiction in this, is that correct?
Yes.
So what's the plan to get Colorado involved?
Yeah, you wanna talk about it?
No, you can, you can, I mean.
So we're working closely with the state, um, we're with the state because that's C dot property, that's state property. Um, and we are putting, we are putting pressure on them. Um, I'm around the area of Islafin 225 almost daily and those have been moved. I drove past Mississippi in 225 a couple of weeks ago. Those have also been swept, so I do think.
No, today, today I drove by there, it's a disaster.
Are they not?
They're everywhere. It's larger than ever.
An agreement with the state, with the seat, with the state, with the governor, I talked to the governor. About trying to actually, that's where that money is going to have to come in from those abatements. I think they said about 75,000 and I think we allocate the cost and we have to do some type of reimbursement. But the mayor said that there was an agreement that he worked with the governor to say that C dot, that we can abate those particular along the I-25 corridor within the Aurora's jurisdiction within 72 hours.
Yeah, yeah, so the, the agreement was, because, so the, the C dot abatement was a 72 hour time span?
It was a seven day.
For seven day?
Original.
And ours was, and ours is 72 hours. The, the mayor or talked to the governor and they came to an agreement that we can abate them in the same time and the state is going to reimburse us.
Can I get a doc of that agreement?
I guess, I don't know, I would be, you, you should email the mayor, you should email the mayor. That was a conversation between them. Yeah, does anybody else have a question? Sandy, go ahead.
There's been groups of people, they travel in force at the intersection, like today was Chambers and Isla, pulling up signs collecting money, but they're walking all over the traffic and in the cars.
Yep.
I've got kids that are twins that are learner's permit, you know, like, oh my gosh, like they don't really want to move.
Yeah, I, so maybe is that a car officer thing? Is that a traffic thing? Or do we do that?
Everything thing has changed, so they don't, the, the stipulation is now aggressive hand handling. So if you're walking traffic like that, it kind of rises to another level of a traffic charge, but that's kind of what we want to see is aggressive hand handling. If there's something there with a sign, you kind of mind their own business, that's a little different if they're going to your car or bounce a ball up your windshield, how to do.
It is daily at a Chambers, the lady selling roses, um, yeah, she was manning my windshield one day. It's almost daily at Islafin Chambers, so maybe. Yeah.
We just, we haven't been enforcing it, so.
Because that's off Parker Road too, where they step off, they're supposed to be getting, but that's.
So do you call 911 when that happens?
You can report it, but we may air it and not send an officer or an officer just may do an area watch on it and just see what they're doing.
Okay, I think we're going to take two more questions. Robbie?
Okay, um, on the homeless situation. If a public nuisance as far as driving, if it's causing all kinds of conflicts with people walking in the streets. I saw somebody with a sign today on, um, I think it was Islafin Chambers. And the sign said, okay, it said, and it was printed out, it wasn't a sign that he drew on. It said it, it was printed out and it says, I'm needing heart surgery and asking for money. I saw the exact same sign in Littleton.
Yeah, in Littleton, but I have a picture of the person.
And, uh, these, the people that are selling the flowers, they've got things written on their signs, you know, they've got a family, they're not working. They can't read the signs that they're holding. Someone else is doing this. And I think that we've got a problem with human trafficking with a lot of these and we need to address this. But we've got homeless encampments. If you're looking for a lost bike, I can tell you where to get it. And I can also tell you that there are a lot of stolen vehicles that are around these homeless encampments.
Sure. Okay, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have one. I've noticed it. I drive down Mississippi quite frequently and I've been not really saying much about it. But there's still vehicles that are driving around, no license plates.
Yes.
They have a button or registered vehicles and they have a 2020 temporary tag. Is that something we're gonna start working with because that's more of an opportunity to ensure that the economy? And I feel like a lot of that, like they're saying they're probably stolen vehicles. That's something I feel like I'm wondering how, how we would approach that, uh, with especially with law enforcement kind of being where it's at, blocking the tight road.
So I will say that the motorcycle, uh, traffic unit has been out, uh, quite frequently in the past couple of weeks. I don't know if you've seen our motorcycle officers out, but they are actually back out proactively, um, policing some of the traffic issues. And I do know, um, if I see an officer on the side of the road, I pull over and, and go talk to them. Um, and I do know that they are proactively going after things like that again now. So hopefully we'll see that turnaround.
Twenty twenty five to kind of more of my residence is and I'll see five, six, seven, just in a three minute time span, so they're out there.
I know, three cars sitting in the same place for almost two months.
Doesn't help to repel people that the campus is open like it should be.
Yeah, how does that affect insurance too?
Do we have people that haven't even asked questions though?
All right, I just want to wrap everyone up, say thank you very much for coming. I know, um, my contact information is available. I know all the rest of my colleagues is available as well. Call, email, however you want to communicate with us, happy to do that and thanks everyone for coming. Look out for three months from now.
Three months? I thought you were going to say every other month.
Whatever.
We will advertise in this at large town hall.
Uh, I've, I've got a couple of rules that I, that I want to talk about, uh, right here. I know that I have this, uh, this presentation for the next, I think it's the next three hours, right?
Sure.
So we'll, we'll all leave, you can.
Okay, I'll just keep talking.
Excellent. I've got a presentation and I know that all of you are going to have opinions on this. I've already heard a bunch, right? And by the way, I'm writing everything down. I promise, you can't look at my hands writing, it's horrible. But what we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about the budget and we're going to, then we're going to switch over, uh, talk about the strategic plan, which is kind of a nebulous little thing that I want to get some information from you, uh, ways to get involved. But I do have homework for you, all right? So not over there, there's a copy of this presentation. I want you to take it, I want you to take it with you. And there's some homework. I know you're saying, I don't even want to listen to you tonight, much less do homework. Help me out with this because there's some questions on here that I'm going to get your information. I'm going to give it to the council members, summarize it from all these meetings and there's going to be questions about, hey, tell us what you want us to know about the 2023 budget process. Because if I ask you this and I'm going to ask and I'm going to get, you know, five or six or seven ideas, but it could last all night long. So that's why this is important to me. There's information over there. If you don't have one of these, Scott, would you help out and, and hand out any of those? Got a couple of pens left, you might have to share pens, I don't know. But here we go. And by the way, uh, I don't read everything on the screen. You're gonna, you're gonna thank me for that afterwards. Uh, but that's why I have this, you can take it home with you and kind of understand it a little bit more, see if you can read it, see if you can understand it. Uh, and at the very end of this, I'm going to give you my email. And if you have any questions where you're like, I don't even understand what's going here, on here on slide seven, what the heck, Hayes? Uh, I want you to let me know, all right? So here we go. First of all, I've been doing this for a little bit and they finally, uh, did something interesting. A couple of, a couple of years back, communications actually set up a, a video of me.
City of Aurora general fund budget, how it works and most importantly, why you should care. I'll give you a hint, because it's your money and as a taxpayer, you have a say on how the money is spent. At any household, there is an income and there are expenses. And household members make decisions about where to spend their money in addition to the basic needs. That ensures is simple, known budget. For the city, it's similar. We have revenue coming mostly from sales tax and we have the allocation of that money to be spent based on the priorities of our residents. I'll expand on the priorities a little later. The city of Aurora budget is also a strategic tool and financial plan. About two-thirds of the total general fund revenue comes from sales and use taxes. These taxes are what you would pay to the city when you buy a taxable item, a good such as clothing or electronics, but not food. Food and services have no sales tax. Regardless of the county you live in, 3.75% of the purchase goes to Aurora. Now that sales tax has not increased since 1993. Pretty amazing, right? We continue operating efficiently without increasing taxes. Also remarkable is that out of all the annual average household expense in property taxes of $3,000, only 300 goes to the city of Aurora. Most of your property tax goes to school districts, counties, and for some residents, special districts. In total, the average Aurora household only pays $86 a month in taxes to the city, less than the average household bill for cell phone or utilities. Now let's talk about what the revenue pays for. The general fund is where most of the city services are funded. About 55% of the general fund pays for public safety, police, fire, dispatch, courts. The other 45% funds hundreds of city services such as streets, housing and community services, libraries, support for businesses, immigrant integration among many other, including snow removal. By law, the city of Aurora must balance its budget every year. This means that the city can't spend more money than what it has, but it can save. Now, why should you care? Well, because it is your money. We are the stewards. The city council sets priorities and goals based on input from residents. You tell us what's important and how the money we have should be allocated. Then the city budget office uses the budget as a strategic tool we mentioned earlier to achieve those goals and priorities. How much should we spend on roads, trails, public safety, technology or other services? Learn more about the city budget and additional ways to get involved at aurorgov.org/budget.
He did a lot better than I could do, so. That's it, we're done, thank you. No, okay. Couple of things on this and, and all of that is correct, but there's a couple of points that, that were made in there that I want to make them again because they're awfully important to us, all right? By the way, I'm going to talk about the stuff on the left-hand side, the stuff on the right-hand side. Those are facts just for you to go and win bets at bars or, or amaze your friends about stuff on the right, so, so go ahead. Number one, we have to have a balanced budget, all right? We are not the federal government, we cannot deficit spend. We can only spend the money that comes in. We don't leave a lot of money laying around doing nothing, all right? That's important and it's important because of some of the things you've just heard tonight. Why can't we have another seven fire stations? Well, we're spending all of our money, so if we're going to take money and put it toward fire stations, we're going to have to take it from something. And that might be a good idea, we just have to have that discussion, all right? Because it's all about a balanced budget. Okay, uh, sometimes you need to choose which things to fund. All of the programs in this city are beautiful little babies and sometimes we need to choose one beautiful baby over another beautiful baby. That's a great example is the Great Recession back in 08, 09 when we closed libraries, we closed pools. We did not lay off cops, we did not lay off firefighters, uh, but we did, we chose some things over other, right? And it makes sense because we only have so much money, right? Fact two, the city manager is going to make the proposed budget. What happens is that our, our, our council members are going to get a budget in the August timeframe and it's going to be a balanced budget. Called the proposed budget is from the city manager and then we come through and do this song and dance and, and presentations and such. And then at this time in, in the October timeframe, I call it budget sausage gets made. And what happens is that we're going to give this all to council and then count, we're going to sit around on a Saturday and council is going to go, I, I see what you've done here, but I want you to take this thing out and I want you to put this thing in. And take this out and put this in and put this in and put this in. And what happens is that the city manager's budget plus council's changes becomes the adopted budget. And why is that important to all of you? Because you all provide the input to council. Number one, with your votes, if there was something that you didn't see that was going on, you'd bring in a different council member, right? You'd look for a different council member who believes more like you do. Great. Public invited to be heard. Who here has gone to a council meeting? Excellent. Who has stood up when the very beginning of every formal council meeting, when they say you have three minutes? And you say your name and you have three minutes to say whatever you want. Beautiful, good job. I will tell you, I have seen changes get made because of, of, uh, public invited to be heard. They went through and they changed the budget because somebody came up and said, this is important, you've got to understand this, you've got to feel for this. Uh, council listened. Do that, all right? This meeting, this meeting is a great example. And I'm, I am not kidding about this. Give me homework. I'm going to give you my email at the end of this. Let us know what you think, all right? This doesn't mean that we can solve every problem, but at least we can know what the problems are. Uh, last thing, a citizen survey, it's kind of a special thing, uh, we, every year, other year, we've been doing a citizen survey uh, up to a certain number of households. We did it again, uh, coming up, so if, maybe one of you got one of those, maybe not, but i- if you did, uh, thank you for filling it out. All right, couple of budget principles. First one's the most important one. You've heard it, you heard fake Greg say it, now you're going to hear real Greg say it. Uh, we have to maintain a balanced budget. It's the very first one. Provide best possible services within the resources available. I, I already touched on that too. We have to have a balanced budget, we're going to give you as much as we can. We do have a maintained adequate and appropriate reserve levels, that's a good idea. I really like this one. For those of you that have heard me talk before, I, I say this every time, use one-time funds for one-time uses. If you find a hundred dollar bill on the ground, do not go put a down payment on a car. Because you're going to have to find that same hundred dollar bill next month and the month after that and the month after that. We use the same logic in the city. If we have money coming into the city and we think that it's one time in nature, we're not going to go put it toward people. Because people are going to cost money next year and the year after that and the year after that, all right? Uh, lots of other things there, efficiencies, innovations, uh, cost reductions should be sustainable. The last one, I like the last one a lot, a multi-year approach to budgeting. I'm going to give council a balanced budget. It's this long. By the way, if any of you have a hard time sleeping, at the very end, you'll be able to find this, this is on the website, city of Aurora website. You just start page one, you'll be asleep by about page seven, it's great. So, but we're going to give them a balanced budget, all right? But it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to balance 2023, but leave 2024 with a big hole. Right? We'll just have to turn around and cut right after that. So we're going to not only balance 2023, we're going to take a, a shot at the next year and the year after that, just to be conservative, just in case. Where does the general fund get its money? Over here on this side, you'll see sales tax, 56%. And if you include what we call use taxes, these are basically sales taxes on, on specific purchases such as autos and buildings. So that's the capital related toward the top and, and auto use. A full two-thirds of the money that, uh, comes into the general fund is based on somebody buying something. So let's just stop and go buy stuff, go to the store, it'd be great. Uh, if you look on their property tax is only about 11%. And you all are sitting there with your property tax bills that have been going up and up and up and you're like, dang it Aurora, what are you doing? Uh, Aurora is a little tiny piece of that. You're probably paying somewhere around 70 to 80 mils and we're around eight mils of that. The vast majority goes to your school, the vast majority goes to, uh, to your county. If you have a special district, I have a special district, that's, that's the biggest single piece of mine. So, so yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a small part of the city. Last time sales tax went up was, uh, in 1993, 29 years ago. Last time property tax was increased was in 2000, that was 22 years ago. It's important to note that both of those came with specific expenditures and were not for general growth, for general city, general city, uh, taxes, tax rates have not increased in, I don't even know how long. Where do we spend our money? These are all the different departments in the general fund. And what I want you to do is I want you to start at the top where it says courts and legal, then you go to police and dispatch and then fire. That's, that's our public safety group. It's about 55, 56%. Most of the money in the general fund is spent on public safety. That is normal for cities of our size. And, and where we are in the, uh, in, in the, in the country, all right? By the way, there's one thing I forgot to tell you on the, on the revenue side. If we were a school, a lot more of our money would be coming in in property taxes. If we were on the east coast, a lot more of our money would be coming in in property taxes. We happen to be in a, in a very specific area of the nation that focuses on, on sales. Which means we're focused more on the economy, right? When the economy dips down, we could be in trouble where you think about property taxes are kind of static. They're kind of just blow up and up and up, uh, much more stable. All right, so this is, I'm gonna stop, this is going to be exciting with this crowd. I want to ask your opinion. Be nice to me. Just, you don't have to be nice to me. And I, 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 I'm giving you this to write down so you can give me your opinions. I'm going to give you my email so you can give me your opinions. Does anybody want to offer up any opinions about, uh, the 2023? Does anybody want to offer up any opinions about the 2023 budget process? Yes! I'm ready.
Okay. If you look at our budget that we had in 2019 for our police department. From 2019 to 2020, we have had a lot of officers leave the force, for whatever reason. Not going to get into that now. We still need the same amount of officers. Do we still have the same budget, even though we don't have enough officers?
Yes, so what happens is that we will give enough budget for a fully-staffed department. What that means is if you have, let's say that they've got five hundred FTE, which is a full-time equivalent to person, alright? We're going to give them enough budget for five hundred FTE for all year long. And what you're talking about, what they're talking about is, "Man, there is not enough people out there that want to be cops right now." So we've got a lot of attrition, we've got a lot of people that are leaving, we're having a hard time filling it up. They've got the budget for those people, they just don't have the people to spend the money on.
What are you doing with that extra money?
It goes into a couple different places. So let's talk Fire first, because that's the easiest one for me. Fire has mandated staffing, you talked about having, what, four people in a rig, right? Let's say that they don't have enough people, or somebody calls in or something like that, or they don't have enough people in there to fill their four-person rig. Somebody's going to have to get on there. So they'll go pay that person overtime. Which means that we're actually paying more for that person on that rig than we would if we had enough people. So not only that, we've also got, now we're busting people because now they're working a ton of overtime and such like that. So that money, they're actually spending more money than we gave them because of the overtime thing. And on the police side, you also have a, it's not called minimum staffing, it's called something, it's a...
Critical staffing?
Critical staff, okay, so they also have a point to where, hey, we've got to have these people. And so there's also a bunch of overtime that comes into that. By the way, it is, it's right, it's back there too. PS Comm has to do the same thing. Public Works has to do the same thing.
Is that money budgeted, or where do you find it?
It's the same thing. Public Works, which is right here at nine percent, we give them full funding for all of the people in Public Works. And so if they can't find enough maintenance workers, and so now they have to give people overtime and such like that, or if things aren't happening as fast, they're spending overtime in there. Now, there's probably some more savings in Public Works. Maybe things just happen slower, because it's usually not emergency situations. But every one of these departments right now are feeling that pinch of people going somewhere else. It's not just Aurora, it's the nation. People are leaving faster than ever before. I actually heard a little factoid just today. This is the record, this time of history, is the record for most jobs available. It's kind of crazy to think about. Most available jobs, and people are just leaving left and right. Yes!
The city recently enacted a camping ban. Are we investing dollars where we're finding camps pop up over and over again so the camps don't return?
There will be dollars spent on camping ban-related stuff, yes.
But I mean, are we investing dollars to prevent the camps from coming back like fences and other things?
I actually don't know the answer to that, let me write that down.
Thank you.
I had heard that there was like, we needed two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars per person in the city to afford the housing for the homeless. And until we get that, we can't institute that ban.
Yeah, I hadn't heard...
That should have been thought of beforehand.
That's not true.
We haven't heard that.
That's not true.
That was just something I heard on the news, guys.
Yeah, yeah, no. Thank everybody, the camping ban will go away.
Okay, camping is a favorite of ours.
Okay, what, over here?
Yeah, I have retired DLC, and each department you have has a budget, right? So if they don't use all that money, like a DLC, and we didn't use it in one department, the next year, our numbers went down.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. When we have cut years, and I want to put this in real terms. During COVID, we got revenue projections and they were horrible. And so we had to do, we had to do some cuts, we had to do some pretty immediate stuff. We did some cuts, there may be things that happen like that. But we're not, we're not somebody that's going to go, "Oh, you didn't spend your dollars, you can't have it next year." That's just not the way. We're going to fully fund these positions, we're going to give every department the ability to get the work done that they need to get done in there. Right back there? Give one or two more, and then I'll go on to my next section.
Courts and Legal, six percent. Is that, that's just the sources from the other things? What happens to the fines and that sort of thing that happen in courts?
That's a great question. So the general fund gets all this money. And up here into the other operating and transfers, there's about four million dollars that comes in in fines, alright? So it's a little bit of money, that money doesn't belong to the court system. It goes to the general fund, and it's for the good of the fund. I will tell you what. My department collects the sales tax. We would be the biggest and the best finance department ever if we got to keep all the sales tax, right? It's the same logic is going to work with fines and forfeitures. They go to the, they go to fund the entire general fund, and they don't sit just for the departments that are in Courts and Legal.
So the money they're collecting pays for them and other...
Honestly, it doesn't even pay for them.
Yeah. That's a problem.
Yeah, it is what it is. Okay, two more, let's go here first, and then...
Quick question on income, how much money does Aurora get from marijuana tax and for the lottery?
About twelve million dollars or so in marijuana funds, twelve, thirteen million dollars. Went way up during COVID. That's what people did during COVID. And it's starting to drop off now, because people are having to go back to work. Interesting way now.
Is that an other?
What's that?
Is fun.
I need to hear the question.
Worse than that.
Oh, that's, okay. So this is the general fund, we do what's called fund accounting. And fund accounting means that we're going to hold different pots of money, we're going to put them in different funds for different purposes. Does anybody, has anybody ever had like a Christmas fund?
Yeah.
Alright, so you, and you put some money into that Christmas fund, at the end of the year, you're going to buy Christmas presents, you're not going to do anything else with it. We use the same logic here in the city. We actually put the marijuana funds in what's called the Marijuana Tax Revenue Fund, set it over there, it's not part of the general fund, it doesn't go to the general fund stock, and then we use that money on other things, alright?
Yeah, so it seems to me that the Housing and Community Services at two percent is pretty low. Especially considering, I think that mental health probably falls, may fall within that. And I'm pretty sure suicide rates across the country are at all-time highs. And I figured that, so basically, my rent went up twenty percent this year. So from nine, and I pay below-market rent, went up from nine-hundred to one-thousand-two-hundred dollars a month. And so with real estate going through the roof and mental health crisis, and that's related to crime increases, right? And it's related to camping. So why don't we increase funding for the police and increase funding for Housing and Community Services, and then we can eradicate? And then, if we can provide housing and mental health, then potentially, we can start to decrease spending on police over time.
Absolutely. Two things, number one, please write that down on a piece of paper.
Yeah, I'll...
Thing two, thing two, when I just talked about the fund accounting, right? There's different funds, there's actually a fund of the city called the Community Development Fund. And that's almost all housing and community service dollars that are coming in from different federal programs that are spent on different things in there as well. So that's not all that Housing and Community Services get, gets, alright? Alright, you've had your hand up forever, so one more, we do have to get on to the next piece.
Just in relation to his question, do you know what restrictions there are, if any, on what we're allowed to spend revenue from marijuana taxes? Like, is there any kind of federal restriction all of the state or cities allow us to spend that money on?
No, no, no. The state had some, no, no, not for Aurora, we can spend it on, well, I don't think we can buy weed, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I'm going to go write that down. Yeah, no, there aren't any restrictions. I will tell you, the marijuana has funded a couple of recreation centers. Marijuana has funded some transportation projects. And so it's, I think we're doing good things with it.
Because when they passed legalization, I had heard that one of the big pushes to prioritize that funding was for schools, do you have any idea?
You know what, that's a state, that's a state thing. And so there's money, that state money that comes in and goes to them, we're not part of that thing. Alright, alright, I'm going to go on it, is that okay? Or is that going to make you sad?
I'll save my question for the next time.
Yes, alright.
But I will still ask it.
Okay, that's good. By the way, if anybody else has questions or anything, I'm going to put my email in here, ask the question. I'm going to give all these people all of this information at the end, from all of these different board meetings, okay? Alright, so we're going to talk a little bit about the strategic plan, and it's a little bit thick, alright? So, and there's some highfalutin words. This is something that we started out a couple of years ago, 2019, 2020 with staff, and then worked with council on it, and started building some outcomes in there. There's a lot of stuff in here, just as important. I'm going to want you to rank these. So those of you that have this piece of paper, you're going to give me something, and it's either just going to have a one, or it's going to have a star. If we could only do one thing right, which one of those one things should it be? Now, I will tell you, we just asked council that question a couple of weeks ago. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to compare what we got from council with what we're getting from the world, and seeing if they're the same. Alright, so what's important? It's important, alright? And last thing is, just give me any impressions at the end about if there's anything that we're missing, alright? So here we go. There, in each of these outcome areas, we're going to do each of these outcome areas, there's going to be a big old statement. And I'm going to read the big old statement, and then I'm going to tell you what it means, alright? And then there's going to be some priorities underneath, and we can talk to that if you'd like. Alright, so the first one is thriving. Aurora is a city in which community members, organizations, and businesses live well, grow strong, and succeed. And the priorities under there is developing partnerships with businesses, nonprofits, arts, all these other places, to facilitate connections and investments in the city. And then leverage the city's industry strengths, locations, advantages, and retail to provide stable employment opportunities, alright? Getting businesses into the city, making sure that the city is still thriving and not becoming a problem, right? If you think about Detroit, would anybody think Detroit's thriving? Probably not, right?
It's my hometown.
They have to work through it, right? But then they're going to get back on the other side, and it's going to be good. But the opposite side, you know, Fort Collins, Fort Collins is thriving. I would say that Aurora's thriving. We seem to be growing quite a bit, and bringing in some things we haven't brought in before. But that's what I'm talking about with thriving, there's a couple more on here. Take advantage of opportunities and existing assets to further define Aurora's sense of unique and diverse placemaking. Just saying, put things in Aurora that people want to visit, right? Not going to put in the Bill Theater, we don't have enough money for that, but is there something that we could put in that'll make somebody from another town come and visit us? Sports Park, Sports Park does that.
Oh yeah, that's a great place.
A racetrack.
Racetrack.
That was proposed years ago.
Yeah, boy, let's do that, let's bring in, put everybody that wants a racetrack on this side, and everybody that says a racetrack's too darn loud on that side, it'll be great.
I thought we wanted to decrease racing.
Alright, collaborate with developers, businesses, nonprofits, public health organizations, and other government agencies to address affordable housing and the needs of the unhoused. Alright, last but not least, provide safe, dependable, and sustainable infrastructure. Alright, so that is thriving. What I want you to do, now I'm going to give you your second one, and what I want you to do is go, okay, is thriving more important, or is healthy and safe? If you only have one to get right, what would it be? Here's what we say about healthy and safe. Aurora is a safe and healthy city with an eye towards preserving open spaces and other resources to promote community well-being. You'll notice, it doesn't just say, "Bring me cops, bring me firefighters." It's actually going into, "Hey, help the open spaces, so we're safe in that area too." As we go along, it's going to talk about mental health awareness. It's going to talk about making sure your water's safe, such like that, alright? So it's much bigger than just the one little world. Number one, understand and address our diverse community's safety needs and preferences. Identify innovative and community-based approaches to enhance public safety and create a welcoming city. Maintain and improve the city's infrastructure, there we go, there's your water sewer and storm services to make sure that we have good water. And good roads. Create and maintain a safe, clean, and pleasant environment, and develop, maintain, and support and promote community physical, mental health initiatives. Pretty holistic. I think we could spend all our money on just that, so. But, we could spend all our money on being thriving too. But here's what I want you to do, if we could only do one thing right, which one of those? Now, I'm going to give you a third one. Planned and maintained, making sure that we're not growing all willy-nilly. Is what I think of this. Aurora is a city that develops, integrates, maintains, and upgrades infrastructure, facilities, systems, and processes to support a strong economy, community wellness, and an effective and efficient city government. There's a lot of words right there, by gosh. Proactively pursue continuous process improvement, always try to get better. Always try to get better. Build, maintain, and upgrade city infrastructure, so where things aren't falling apart. Re-envision the use of data, technology, resources, land, and partnerships to deliver better outcomes for the city. I'm going to give you an example of that. Right now, some cities have their traffic lights on a system. And if something goes wrong, they could be on this system and say, "Oh my gosh, something's going on here, I want to make this traffic light thirty seconds longer so people can move over here, so we can get this thing fixed over here." That's not the sort of thing City of Aurora has, it's an expensive deal. It would be kind of cool, if you could logic through, go, "Wow, you could solve some issues" having it go that way. But that's an example of using data, using technology to do something better for your city. Use sustainable practices when developing, maintaining, and upgrading city infrastructure. Alright, so that's planned and maintained. Now you've got three. Is your head full yet? Because I'm about to give you another one.
Did you write all of these?
I, all of this is, no, I did not, I did not. But I'll tell you what I'm doing, I'm the first group to, I'm the first person to bring this stuff out to the world, and I'm getting opinions.
Who writes this, I mean, where does this come from?
This came from staff, this came from staff, working through with council and working through with what we call department heads, you know, the pie chart with all the police and fire and public works. All the department heads and all the people underneath them came through and were the ones that created these lists. And by the way, this, we're going to look at this every year. This is not a static thing, this is now the Ten Commandments, and they're never going to change. We're going to come through and look at these and go, "Okay, this one's not working, this one is working, maybe we got to think more about this." Different priorities are coming in, that sort of thing. So here's my fourth. Diverse, equitable, and inclusive. Aurora celebrates and embraces its diversity in interests, backgrounds, cultures, stages of life, and perspectives. Equitable community access to all city services, the hallmark of our city's character. Let's see if this will work. Scott, how many languages are spoken in the City of Aurora?
Hundred and sixty-eight, I think.
I think that's the exact number I had yesterday, nice job, that's impressive. Hundred and sixty-eight languages, right? Something else. This is all about making sure that everybody has consistent, a consistent feel when they work in Aurora, or when they deal with Aurora. Identify and provide additional amenities to attract and retain a diverse population. Engage the community in celebrating diversity. Establish a city organizational ethos that values and restricts the benefits of diversity, equity, inclusion. Increase participation. I will tell you that back when I started, they didn't have a Spanish speaking line for anybody who wanted to watch the council meetings. And now we do, there's a great example. Provide equitable access to city services and connect a diverse workforce with employment opportunities within the city government to enhance a strong economy. Last night, I gave this to a group that was not near as exciting as you are. And I had a question once, why do you use ethos, what is ethos? What do you even mean, where that's what... To where that's what I went, boy, I, I wanna know from this crowd, as you're looking through this, and I really do want you to do this. Look through this, and let me know if we're using right words. Cuz it seems to me that ethos is a weird word to use. It is, it is an odd word now that you look at it, right? So, but that's, now you're, now you're in the world of what I'm asking you about. Alright, I gave you four. One more, resilient. Uh, I, this is so many words. Aurora proactively seeks to minimize the impacts of disasters, disruptions, environmental changes, uh, unforeseen stressors and shocks. Uh, basically, all this just means be prepared. Be prepared. I will give you a great example of this. Uh, when COVID happened, and we all had to get out of the city, my entire group, uh, didn't have laptops. And we had to get out of the office. So what we did is, because they closed the libraries, we borrowed the, the library laptops, so we could continue our work. Great example. This, okay, I live here, I live here. Assure the city's long-term financial viability. Fail if you do. We all are in the same boat on that. Uh, foster community resilience through focused programs to build and maintain mutual support capacity trust among neighbors. I do like that, uh, relationship among neighbors. When you talk about, I heard, uh, neighborhood, uh, watch groups, neighborhood support, the work that they do in building with the neighborhoods helps with this, the resiliency. Foster organizational resilience through programs with the capacity to respond rapidly to disruption, and of course, sustain your natural environmental resiliency. Uh, don't put all your water eggs in one basket. Cuz we're gonna need water. So that's it. That's nearly my last slide on this. Does everybody understand the homework? Yes?
Uh, where would trash fall under those categories? Where we could have, instead of the dozens of trash companies that are in the city, do like Thornton, and only have one? And, I mean, they pay a fraction for their garbage that we do. And they have free trash.
You know what, that's a really good question. That's a really good question. You, you've got your piece of paper, right? Say, where the heck does trash live? And I'll tell you, that just happened last night, somebody said, no, what, I have a, I have a sidewalk in Old Aurora. So it's the little sidewalks in Old Aurora, and it's all banged up, and I know of a guy who's in a wheelchair, and he can't get down the street, down the sidewalk. Where does that live? And I'm sitting in there going, huh, that's a good question. Write that down, cuz I'm gonna bring all these back to the crowd. Any other questions on this? Yes?
Thank you, Greg. This kind, kind of ties into this as well as the earlier slides. Um, in 2018, we were talking about deferred road maintenance.
Yes.
I think it was about 20 million and growing. Do we have an update on that?
We do, we do, we, we, we've got an idea. You, do you, do you wanna talk through it a little bit, or?
Yeah, I will. Um, so, and remind, the date is May 16th, right? Um, say session?
Yes.
So this was an issue that, um, as a candidate for council, I talked about, and, and actually before being on council, I don't know if Greg talked about the Citizens Advisory Budget Committee, but it's a committee that...
It's the next slide. Good job.
Every member of council, we get, we all get two appointees to the Citizens Advisory Budget Committee. And, and my work on that, I, I wanted to bring forward a plan to address road maintenance and the deferred maintenance, because the deferred maintenance had been accruing since '08-ish, right? That's when the city had started to underf- underfund our annual road maintenance. So upon being elected, I sat down with Greg, um, our Public Works team, and, um, Laura Perry, who is one of our deputy city managers over, um, Public Works, and started to kind of push on what plan we could come up with to do a couple of things. One, to ensure that going forward, our roads were maintained at an adequate level. And two, to make up the, the backlog or the deferred maintenance that had been building up since 2008. That number, that $20 million was really the gap between what we were funding in on an annual basis and what we needed. One of the things that we're gonna bring forward on May 16th, there's a three-part plan. The first is, uh, we're gonna change the way we determine how much is needed on an annual basis. Before the change, so currently, what we would do is it was a schedule, a 15, 20, and 25-year schedule. We're gonna change that to what's called a pavement condition index. So it's a much more subjective measure of what are the conditions of the road, as opposed to just arbitrary schedule. So by making that change, and then secondly, we're going to create, um, a separate, we talked about funds, right? We have all these different funds. So currently, road maintenance is funded out of the Capital Projects Fund. To give more transparency, to ensure that we're continually funding roads, we're gonna create a, a transportation maintenance fund. There's a number of line items that already go into the Capital Projects Fund for road maintenance, and all we're doing is shifting them over, so that we can have, uh, full transparency on the, uh, transportation maintenance fund, to make sure that going forward, we don't get into the situation we did. And then the third thing that we're doing is that, while we can't deficit spend the way that Congress can, thankfully, the one thing that we can do is leverage assets, um, through what are called COPs or Certificate of Participation. The way to think of these is they're like home equity lines of credit. So we have a couple of assets in the city, they're unencumbered, and we're limited on how much we can do this, by the way, by the number of assets. So we have a, a couple of assets that are unencumbered that allow us to, to borrow $35 million, and then we'll have to use, we'll have to dedicate general fund revenue or some revenue toward that, uh, debt maintenance over the next 15 to 20 years. But if we do that, we'll get our road maintenance, um, from where we've been behind for the past 15 years. Within a year or two, we will be completely caught up to have, they, talking about the pavement condition index. The goal will be to be at 73. With this plan, we will be at a 74 and be able to go on to 73 going forward. So within another year or two, we'll be on a path to doing that.
And there's, and there's one more, one more stat.
Second question.
As part of the 2022 budget, cuz this, he's, what he's talking about is, is 2023 and such. As part of the 2022 budget, uh, we, we cobbled together some money to start working on the thing, to the tune of somewhere around eight to 10 million dollars. So we did a pretty good job in 2022, and we're doing a good job in 2023 to try to solve that problem, which I will tell you, uh, I've been here since God was little, and, and, and I've never heard of being solved. So I think it's kind of exciting.
Yes, second, second question. Um, I was on SCABC in 2018.
Yes, you were.
And another member asked for benchmark data on retail. And that was, you, you brought this with a report. It was prepared by a grad student and at CU Denver. And in the back, supporting table ranks Aurora's retail tax base versus the 12 other cities in Colorado.
Yes, yeah. I remember, I vaguely remember that, yeah.
I punched that data into an Excel spreadsheet and indexed to Aurora. We're 14 points below average, and 59 points behind, behind Denver. Do you have anything more current?
I, no, no, I do not.
And I guess, I, I'll, I'll ask the council members here, you're flying blind. Why aren't you looking at the benchmark data? Don't just look at growth and say, oh, it's go, it's growing up. If you're 14 points below average, you're failing. If you're 59 points behind Denver on per capita retail performance of your tax base, how are you ever going to compete with Denver when hiring law enforcement? That's your primary source of revenue.
Yeah.
And you're not paying attention.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that, that data is now seven or eight years old.
Alright, worth taking. Alright, I'm up here to wrap you up. Okay, very good. Thanks, Greg. Thank you very much.
Everybody has Greg's, is it up here?
You know what?
That slide?
It's right there.
Everyone has homework?
G Hayes, no, 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 no. This is, this is only if you wanna fall asleep at night. That's how to find that book. Greg Hayes, G Hayes at aurorgov.org, and it's H A Y S. There's no E in there. I think we spelled our name wrong, but I'm not certain.
And there are hard copies of his presentation over here, if you wanna grab one.
And the homework is right next to it.